Hey, so we will call the January sixteenth, twenty twenty five planning commission meeting to order. And we have a roll call.
Chair Nolan.
President.
Vice President Hamilton.
Present.
Commissioner Abrams.
Present.
Bishop Brunda.
Present.
Commissioner Geiger.
Present.
Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
Commissioner Biles.
Here.
Okay, and in our packet, we have the minutes of the November twenty first planning commission meeting, our last meeting. I'll say everyone had a chance to review those. Are there any corrections for that? Okay, so there are no corrections, motion to approve?
Move that they be approved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, rolling through there. We have no hearings on our schedule today, so that gets us to briefings and discussions that all turned out really interesting.
Alright, thank you. So I have a short presentation regarding planning commission bylaws. So over the past, I don't know how long it takes.
Before we start on new stuff, can someone just sort of give us a quick update as to what happened with the comprehensive plan?
Oh, sure. Yeah. See, the last planning commission meeting was in November, I believe. Yeah, so the city council did two public hearings in December on the third and the tenth. And then they voted to adopt the comprehensive plan and the code amendments with no changes other than ones that the planning commission recommended. Correct? Any no changes? Yeah. And then, so they passed that in the middle of December, so we met our twenty twenty four deadline, which is great. It's currently, we also, it's currently being reviewed by PSRC to be certified. We don't have that done yet. And we just received the final edited package back from OTAC, which has everything, all the, all the errors fixed and all the, the links in place, and it's a final copy. Yeah.
Quick correction. Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Jeff Ryan, Director of Planning. There were some slight modifications to the comp plan. They were not major policy modifications. They were like little changes to like some specific language, like a deep buried deep in the body of the text. I think maybe one or two goals changed. There was maybe one word that changed. Oh, we'll make sure that we provide a copy of the specific changes that were made, but nothing substantive or changes or no major policy departures for me. Thanks.
Yeah, that's right. I'd forgotten. There was a couple, single or multiple word changes. It's very, very minimal. Yeah. Any other questions about the comp plan? Alright, so I mean, got it done, and I'm glad we got done on our deadline. It was getting a little hairy there for a while, but we got done. Alright, so back to the bylaws. The clerk stuff has been updating standardizing boards, cities' boards and commissions, making sure that there is all the language in the code is standard, making sure they all have rules and procedure and bylaws and so forth, because some of them didn't have those. The planning commission actually already had rules and procedures in place. They're adopted in nineteen eighty four. Yep, nineteen eighty four. As well as some, a couple resolutions that had established term lengths and date, date, time and place for their meetings. Those have not been rescinded since nineteen eighty four, and they're now out of date, especially at the time and place of regular meetings, which is defined in, in city code. So the clerk has prepared a set of bylaws for the planning commission. We're kind of the inaugural board. We're the first one to adopt these new ones, and then if it works well with us, they're, they'll move on to the rest of them. So in the packet, there's a copy of the draft bylaws. If you could review it by next meeting, feel free to send any comments to planningmillcreekwa.gov. And if you have no changes to those bylaws, we'll go ahead and introduce a resolution to adopt the new bylaws and rescind the old all procedures and date, time, place for the meetings and so forth. Alright, any questions about that?
You know?
Alright, great. Then I'll move on to our new director, Jeff Ryan, who's got some presentations about your new annual code update process and the South Town Center status.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Once again, excited to meet you all and work with everyone moving forward. So I just wanted to keep you all heads up that essentially every time we introduce a new initiative or planning thing, I wanted to also brief you all to let you know what we're doing, what we're up to, and how the planning commission is going to be utilized for that initiative. The first one of those is, I wish I could say is exciting for anyone that's not a nerd like me, is the annual code update. So municipal codes are a lot like cars. You gotta do annual maintenance, and if you don't, it's gonna get expensive real, real quick. Typically, in a lot of other cities, there's a regular, consistent process for identifying where there are really small, minor processual issues with the code, like, oh, we make, maybe we make this type of permanent route in a really weird way. Or we're really vague about how we interpret this really technical stormwater provision. And whenever we have, or sometimes they make changes to the code, really, alright, well, let's just fix the code right here, and then it really stop and think about are there other parts of the code that maybe need to also be modified? So when you amend the code in a piecemeal way, or you delay stuff entirely, it can lead to some really confusing opportunities when you're trying to do your development review, and you see like, what the heck, this code says three different things. What's the right interpretation? Or a lot of times, you might have a piece of code that really made sense maybe twenty years ago, and then maybe it's kind of counter to what we're trying to, the direction the city is trying to grow or trying to move now, and we just have to periodically go back and fix those codes. And again, sometimes vague and poorly written code can just make the planning process slower and harder to predict, which for development and for everything like that is a bad thing, because you want things to be as predictable as possible to minimize risk to development as well. So what is the annual code update? This is a process that we're gonna be taking every year. Think of it like spring cleaning only takes place in the fall, so it's fall cleaning, I guess. And it's gonna be a consistent process, though. That's, we're just gonna be going through and identifying those little nitty gritty issues that need to be addressed that can really gum up the development process. The reason why it's gonna be more deliberate and more focused is that we really wanna make sure that this is a stakeholder-driven process, that we're speaking with developers, we're speaking to the business community, we're talking to the people who are coming up against the code all the time, and it's coming up their projects and our projects as well. And we also wanna make sure we're doing a robust community outreach process for this. This annual code update isn't about police matters. It's not about anything else. This is mostly just trying to focus on land development issues and development issues, I figure. So that's one thing to keep in mind, too, when we're looking and we're soliciting the general public for type of code issues we wanna address. You know, we're not trying to address financial policy issues. We're not trying to address speed cameras. We're just talking about really boring stuff. So what is it for? So this is for code, like I said, this is for code, it, code that's out of date, vague, negative impact. We're looking specifically for code issues that are minor in scope, maybe, that could have a significant impact for the broader city operations. So there might be sometimes a code that says, well, in order to go forward with this development, you have to make sure that there's, you know, sixteen dingbats there, when you don't really, you really only need four dingbats or something. I'm just making an example. You get around getting here. Or you have a code issue that maybe govern how the city processes an item that creates inefficiency. What is it not for? This is not the avenue for zone, for zone changes, right? We're not trying to change zoning. We're not trying to adopt significant policy changes. We're not, this isn't the appropriate avenue for doing like ADUs or anything like that. This isn't for anything controversial that's gonna merit significant debate discussion, so we're not talking about traffic cameras. This is really for, and this is really our, our, our opportunity to make lots of little changes. That's the thing I wanna emphasize, lots of little changes. So our process is going to be, we wanna do a robust public outreach process. We, after we identify our little code changes, we'll do a draft, we'll, we'll draft our, our compiled list of changes we'd like to make to the code. We'll do a workshop with the public, we'll bring it forward for debate and adoption, bring it forced planning commission into city council, and then after it's implemented, we'll sit back, see how things are implementing, and we'll start the process all over again. So it's an annual process, but it's at least the appropriate avenue for making changes. So right now, I introduced this at the beginning of the month of January. I'm introducing it to you all now, so we're in the winter of twenty twenty five. And spring twenty twenty five is when we'll be reaching out, starting to kind of maybe do surveys, starting to do our public engagement, talking to stakeholders, focus groups, maybe reaching out to some applicants who had rejected applications and see, hey, what happened? Is there anything that we can do to adjust with their code? We'll be, over the summer, we'll be evaluating everyone's feedback that we get from the public. We'll be doing public workshops in the summer. And then that's where we'll be really writing the, writing the code. And in the fall, we'll be bringing this forward and seeking planning commission recommendation. And then finally, and eventually, city council review and approval. Happy to answer any questions.
So is there anything we're gonna be working on? Is it in one chapter? I'm not sure how to define chapter. Is it?
It's probably gonna be like two or three chapters.
Okay.
Yeah. We're probably gonna be looking a little bit at some of the maybe environmental stuff, if there's any changes. Might be some changes we might wanna make to the land development sections. You know, I think a good example would be like of a little change we're talking about that creates a lot of vagaries is like we don't define lock coverage. You know, it's one of those things where you'd think a municipal code would define a critical concept like a lock coverage. We don't actually define that in our code anymore. Or we don't really differentiate between like roadway buffers, meetings and things along those lines, things that the public probably does not care about. But for engineers, planners, people who are into this kind of thing, like, oh, actually, maybe we should have definitions for these kinds of things. That's the kind of thing that we're talking about here. So, you know, those kinds of policy changes could take place, and those, and I think chapters fourteen through eighteen.
Yeah, titles fourteen, thirteen.
Yeah. Ah, I memorized it. Week eight, already know it.
Other questions? Alright, anything online?
I've got a quick question. Just confirming, you know, with this, these set of, so you mentioned these kind of code amendments. This is gonna be separate from anything else we still have to do as a as a result of, of the comprehensive plan, or are we gonna kind of put that all together? I think it's gonna be separate, right?
Correct. So this would be an independent standing initiative. It's gonna be done at the very end of the year. Yeah.
Yeah, we, we will have other code amendments working on this year, but they won't be part of the annual process. Like, we have to do some middle housing work before the end of June.
Yeah. The reason why we're doing that is because we wanna make sure this annual code update, and we're talking about these lots of little changes. It's, we're making sure that there's lots of little changes to get their, their time in the sun, because things like middle housing is gonna draw significant discussion. And when we do stuff like the sub area or anything like that, all these other projects that we have in the work plan, there's gonna be a lot of, it merits much more significant discussion about those issues, and I think it's just important to separate out these lots of little stuff from the big issues, so that we can kind of keep our conversations focused and do, provide proper diligence.
Is this a city initiative, or is it something being edicted by the state?
This is, this is a city initiative.
Okay. Well, you get to do so many things that are edicted by the state.
Yeah, this, this is home cooking, but it's one of those things where a lot of cities do this. And it's good to have an established process, probably a good like preview of the kind of things that we'll be bringing forward is like there's no actual process in our code for updating the code. You know, it's one of those things where like, oh, well, that's probably the kind of thing that we should address. We should probably have in our code. Or we don't have policy manual for how a project gets developed, for example. So these are just things that probably could have been done, you know, ten, twenty years ago, but we're getting to it now, and that's what is matters most.
Okay.
Thanks. Are, are you looking at updating the Mill Creek standard plans to, to go with the code updates?
Yeah, our public works department is updating all standard plans. I don't know their timeline, and then they're doing it this year. Most of the, the sample aren't in code, so won't be part of this. But if you have suggestions for the, our engineers for updates to that, we'd be happy to, to hear those and send them over to them.
Okay. I just know they talk to each other quite a bit, always in where I work.
Big sense. Okay, I was gonna say, the, the, that's why there's such a long public input process for this, because we wanna make sure that we get opportunities to talk about that, because there might be stuff where they're saying like, hey, what about this big issue? And we need to look at it, and then it might be the kind of thing like, ah, maybe that's probably not what we wanna evaluate here, but it's something that we can pass to the engineering department, and they can review with their issues. It's really a deliberate way for us to try to get as much public feedback about really technical issues in our code, and if we can't address it on the planning side, we can direct it to our friends in engineering. Okay.
Bring you to our next president.
And we're moving on. Alright, so I'm just gonna give you the presentation that I gave city council. So this is an update on the South Town Center master plan. I know that the planning commission played a really instrumental role in passing the comprehensive plan. We're very excited about that. I just wanna take a little bit of time to spike the football a little about that, that, that milestone. What we achieved with that comprehensive plan compared to our peers is fairly remarkable. I think if I look at what other cities did and what vision they proposed, if I think about it in terms of just how bold of the vision that was offered in the Mill Creek plan, and how much of a kind of new direction it's putting the city on compared to our peer cities where maybe that direction isn't as bold as ours. I think that's something that's should be celebrated, and I want to take so much to commend the planning commission for your leadership on that, because that planning commission is something that we should really be proud of. It's really gonna pave the way for a dynamic, for a dynamic city. And part of that primarily is especially through the visioning on the South Town Center area and the vision for this. You all identified the South Town Center as an area that's critical for long-term viability in the city, economic development, everything like that, housing. The South Town Center is really our most ripe area for development. Part of that town, part of the, the comp plan update, we also rezone the town center, and that's where we got most of our housing capacity to be complying with GMA. This initiative here is going to include a master plan. The, it's gonna include an environmental impact statement or survey, it was EIS. It's gonna be converted to EIS. There's also gonna be a planned action ordinance. By doing these, these, these things, these three things together, it's going to much, it's gonna make the redevelopment of the South Town area much more likely, as it removes a substantial amount of the and mitigates a lot of the risk associated with development for other interested parties. Just as a reminder, I'm sure I don't need to remind you all, but for anyone tuning in on YouTube after this, the South Town Center's potential is pretty, pretty huge. It's a gateway to the city. It's regionally connected by, you know, obviously the cars, but also by bus rapid by, and eventually it's gonna be connected by rail with the bus systems and stuff. It's gonna be a desirable neighborhood. It's gonna be a really cool hip spot, lots of good restaurants, shops, getting next to that North Creek area with this beautiful forest. It's gonna have a really desirable urban design. It's gonna be just an incredible place to live, work and play. And it's also gonna be something of a community hub, right? Like, we already have, I think about that every time I come to work and I see that beautiful Christmas tree out front. You know, we all gathered outside the Christmas tree in that atrocious weather, but it was a really great community event watching that Christmas tree get lit up. And I think it kind of reveals how the, this downtown sub area is already an important part of the Mill Creek community. And by developing this area, we can continue that to be an important part of the city's identity.
So when you go back to that other map, is the South Town Center inclusive of areas south of one sixty fourth?
So we'll, we'll get to that.
Oh.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get to that. So so you got ahead of me just a little bit on the scope of services, if I can circle back on that question in like two slides. So just let you all know, the RFQ, so the Request for Qualifications is, was published on January second, and then it will conclude on February third. So we have sent out a request to all interested parties, all architecture firms, engineering firms, planning firms, whoever can provide our list of the best qualifications in order to lead this effort for a master plan, stuff like that, we're gonna be selecting, moving forward to award this big, to award the contract to execute this initiative. Questions and, and submissions are only gonna be accepted by email. We're not taking physical copy. And we advertise this in the Everett Herald, the Daily Journal of Commerce, as well as the American Planning Association. So we're trying to hit both local and national reach with our scope of services. So what this master plan process is going to include is a sub area master plan that's gonna include stuff like urban design. It's gonna talk about, it's gonna, we're looking for someone who has an approach that can integrate urban design, but also we're gonna be talking about public, who can integrate a strong public participation process and how they draft their urban, into their master plan. We want someone who's gonna recommend data-driven policies. That's gonna include a marketing strategy and an implementation strategy. A lot of, a lot of this is take, all these steps are taken specifically to make sure that this development's going to work, and so that's an important part. It's gonna include the environmental impact statement, where they're gonna define alternatives, impacts and mitigation measures. It's gonna include a planned action ordinance, so it's gonna get all the infrastructure in assessed and make sure that whatever is built is already consistent with CIPA and other regulations. And then finally, the area south of the one sixty four. This is going to include an economic development strategy. So this part of the scope of services was actually added as a result of discussions during city council. During city council, when they were debating the comprehensive plan, there was a lot of concerns about existing manufacturing in the sub area and not being able to grow anymore, because they had nowhere else to go. And so kind of as a, as an olive branch to concerns about preserving the ability to create jobs, we are including some funds and scope in this project to develop an economic development strategy for that business park south of one sixty four. Because it's still that business park zoning, so it still has the type, the, the correct zoning for manufacturing and stuff like that. And so we wanna develop an economic strategy to see what steps the city can take to, to attract or support businesses who are looking to expand in that area south of there, because there's actually quite a bit of land that's, has potential for manufacturing. And we wanna make sure that area wasn't ignored.
One more. Is there, is there any federal funding associated with this?
No, there's no, this is all, this is all funded through, through city finances, yeah. But that being said, if federal funds were to be introduced at some point, we did set up this RFQ process so that it would still qualify for federal grants, should those opportunities come available.
Are we getting some funding from the old ARPA funding?
We might, we might have, we might, there might be some ARPA funding still there. Don't quote me on that. The ARPA funds got recolored multiple times, so at what point they cease to be federal or become, I don't know. I don't wanna stray into areas I'm not familiar with. All I know is that we got city funds from the, it's a general fund line item, and it's funding this project.
Point of privilege. Could you actually just hit okay on that bar at the top? Oh, that did, that was not what I meant. Oh, I had, I had hoped that that would move the screen share information up and out of the way. It blocks part of what we can see. Okay, it doesn't. Never mind. Alright, sorry.
Other questions on the South Town Center and the economic development area?
So will it have a hard date when it's supposed to be completed?
Well.
Is that part of the RFQ process, or the RFP process?
So as of right now, you know, we're the submit, the deadline submission is February third. We're gonna select the candidate as of February fourteenth, so we're gonna break some hearts on Valentine's Day. And then we're hoping to have the contract approved by March twenty twenty five, so reasonably, we can probably expect a start date by April twenty twenty five. We expect this to take about a year and some change. That could, that timeline could slip depending on, you know, what happens, but we're hoping April twenty twenty six is when we'll have completed project. But, you know, I think we can reasonably expect maybe some, some things can change left or right, but we're hoping for April twenty twenty six.
Okay, thank you. Is it possible to see the criteria for the RF, what the risk, restful qualifications?
A hundred percent, absolutely.
And will there be an RFP after this?
No, there will not be an RFP for this. So this is just for the RFQ. We'll get all the applicants, and then they'll be doing the whole shebang. I think folks can see my screen here, right?
Yes. So will pricing be associated with this?
With part, as part of the, the bid. Yeah, I think that that'll be part of the negotiation process of what they would like to see. Alright, so this was the RP that was published. We provided background. The thing that you were asking about is the qualifications. So we're gonna be looking for folks who have whose disciplines include land use, planning, urban design, civil and engineer, civil and environmental engineering, transportation engineering, architecture, communications, economic finance, et cetera. Part of the evaluation criteria that we're looking for is, we set it out of a hundred points where we tried to score the things that we think are most important to us. You know, qualifications of firm and team members and qual, quality of resumes and key individuals. Obviously, these are important, but, you know, probably everyone's gonna have a good resume. What's more important is, do they have relevant past experience doing master plans? Have they ever done an EAS before? Have they ever done this kind of thing before? It wasn't successful. We also wanna find someone, you know, they don't have to be from this area, but we want someone who's familiar with the local conditions. You know, being from this area isn't as important, I think, as just being able to really know, what is it like in Mill Creek? What is it like in Snohomish in, in this area? And, you know, do they have experience working this stuff? And then finally, most important is, what is their approach to deliver the scope of services? This is one where maybe it's a little harder to quantify, but, you know, through the selection process, the interview process, we're gonna know like, how are they going to develop their master plan? How do they develop their, their design controls? How do they develop their policies? How do they wanna, how are they gonna approach these engineering questions and stuff like that? That's gonna be the most heavily weighted thing for us. So that'll be part of our selection process. Once we get these, these points, we'll score them. We'll have a committee internally where we'll select them, and then we'll move forward from there.
Yeah, you mentioned there's a budget for this. What's, what's the city budget at this point?
Six hundred thousand dollars.
Other questions?
This isn't fixed price, right?
Well, I hope it doesn't go over six hundred thousand. That's all we got for.
I mean, it's ten thousand?
Hmm?
It's ten thousand?
No, the, the total budget is six hundred thousand.
Yeah, but how much is for this?
Just for the RFP?
Yeah. No, for the, for the contract.
Oh, for the contract?
Six hundred thousand for the contract?
Yeah, for the total, yeah, for the total project, yeah. The reason why it's so expensive is likely the EIS and the engineering components of this can get quite expensive. But when we spoke with Bothell Kirkland, all these other firms, I mean, I believe you all are a part of these tours. That was one thing that we've heard consistently from our peer cities that have had successful downturn revitalizations. They all said, you gotta do the planned action ordinance, you gotta do the EIS, you gotta lay the stuff out there, because it really eliminates a lot of the risk and really helps facilitate development.
So will the project be in phases?
Well, I guess we'll find out whatever these guys propose. Yeah, we anticipate it'll probably be done in phases.
Anticipate wanting phases?
I anticipate wanting phases. I think that makes sense. I think.
Limitations on pricing associated with each phase?
I think a lot of that is, you know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna get the cart before the horse on some of that. I think that's where it comes into our selection process. And whatever the firm wants to provide information on, I think a lot of this is gonna be part of, you know, these are great questions that we're gonna be asking during the selection process and how we determine their approach.
So is part of their submittal or billable rate, if you have a, you know, beginning planner, he's X number of dollars per hour, and the senior engineer is worth Y number of dollars per hour or?
Typically so. A lot of times RFQs include the negotiated price of what you're paying for, and that's a part of their bid of what their their, their services they're offering. Their, their services they're offering. But again, all that would be negotiated, once we, once we find a, a team, we like their approach, we like their style, we think it fits. You know, we think we're all simpatico, then in the negotiation process, we'll set up those details.
They might need a good contract guy, they might need a good contract guy.
Mr. Abrams led the procurement for King County for several years.
Oh, I'm sure, you know.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
And sorry, I, I might, my audio cut off a little bit ago, I guess, I, I had asked a quick question, so who selects the candidates? I, I see that February fourteenth date. Is that just internally to the, the, the planning department, or who, who makes that determination?
So part of the selection process for this is going to do, um, because this is going to be such an interdepartmental project. Um, you know, the engineering folks gonna have a say, that even mark, mark, um. Tourism and marketing is gonna have a say in this, so we're anticipating uh mostly city leadership uh, um, being comprised of the selection committee.
Other questions on our South Town Center master plan or update?
I just have one, was this really pre-advertised? To a lot of different firms that this was coming in the pipeline as firms in RFQ?
It wasn't necessarily pre-advertised, but um, uh, I would be surprised if local firms didn't know it was coming, if that makes any sense.
Okay, yeah, it just, you know, a month time window is a quick turnaround if you hadn't pre, kind of. Let people know it was coming in the pipeline.
Yeah, I understand it, yeah. I think a month turnaround, and s- sometimes it can, I think for certain industries, maybe that's could be a long turnaround, but I think for like. RFQs like this, at least in my experience, that's been pretty standard, industry standard is a month turnaround. Um, it could be even longer in some, since I've seen some RFQs where it's shorter, and they sometimes they'll do that as a way to weed out. You know, lesser qualified teams. I don't know if you'd agree with Commissioner Abrams, I don't know if you'd agree with that, Mr. Commissioner Abrams.
I'm just a commissioner. I don't do that work anymore.
It's past life.
Okay, so I think then we are on to for the good of the order.
Justin, do you want me to do anything with this uh?
Well, actually, I had, I had one question, if we could go back to the first slide, I think it was on this, I think it was on this presentation, sorry. First one of consequence, um. Yeah, I just, I wanted to point out that in this diagram, the map there that includes the bus routes. Um, the green line doesn't go, doesn't turn left at uh one hundred and thirty second and five twenty seven, that's an illegal left turn. So they actually turn on sixteenth Ave.
Got it.
Um, I'd, because we use things like our transit access to help us make zoning decisions and things like that. I wanna make sure that this error doesn't propagate on.
Sure.
To decisions in the future.
Yeah, we'll make down to that.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I do have another question, so I read in the paper that the council is considering annexation.
Um, it's true, it's being discussed, um, it is going to be, uh. We did present on annexation options yet on Tuesday. Um, talking about what are the legal options if it was to be pursued, um, whether or not it goes further. Uh, I'm not sure, that's at council's discretion, I think it is something that's uh on people's minds, but as far as. Whether or not council's gonna pursue it, uh, I can't speak to that.
And then there was a statement on um. Basically, you know, interlocal arrangements that are going to occur potentially?
It, so there are, interlocal agreements are a, an avenue for annexation, that's a new um type of annexation, that's um recent, but again. Um, I don't wanna opine on whether or not, well, will you or will you is not, but um, yeah, it has been presented in city council, I think it is something that is. Um, being, being noodled on.
So the only reason I'm asking those two questions is the evaluation panel. Is the evaluation, are, are you far, far enough along in those concepts of interlocal and annexation? To include members outside of the city to be in the evaluation?
Uh, we're not that far along, we, I would say at this point, the annexation isn't even a twinkle in our, a twinkle in our mom's eye, it's just. Not, we're not there yet, we're, now we're just considering, are we gonna do it or not, we're not really sure. Um, and when they give it, when direction is given to pursue it, then um, we'll be able to have. I'll be able to answer more detailed questions like that. Um, I think these are also great questions for when we have, um, are able to have a, a. Council member present as the liaison that can maybe speak more um accurately to uh council priorities.
That's a good, a good, good of the order question.
Yeah.
Are there any staff or, or city go to the order items?
Nothing for me.
Um, I do have, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I wanna enter into the record, if we start talking about annexation, I know we aren't there yet, but I'm the chairman of the boundary review board for Snohomish County. So I'd be on, have to decide what to do at some point in time.
Okay, so, alright, so we'll be super nice to you then, right? You'll have to let, you'll have to let us know what your favorite pastry is. Um, for the good of the order, so this year, um, like I said, we're gonna be working the annual plan, we're gonna be on the annual code updates, we'll be working on RFQ sub area. We're also working on several things that we won't be bringing forward to you unfortunately, but um are pretty important to planning overall, we'll be upgrading our, our permitting software. Um, that's gonna be a significant lift on our capabilities to function as a planning department, we're also gonna be working on um. Um, we will be working with our finance department to be working to reevaluate fees. That's likely going to involve planning commission input, as we look at our development fees and things along those lines. Um, some of our fees are pre YouTube, um, and some are even older than that, some of them are, um, might be as old as The Simpsons, maybe. Um, they're, haven't been updated in quite some time, um, and so we'll be reevaluating our fees and development fees and things along those lines to see how they're going. Um, and then we're also waiting for council direction on um the development of the DRCC as well, so that could be an item on our work plan as well. Um, so as I tell my team, stay frosty, we're gonna be um, working on a lot of different projects and initiatives. Um, oh yeah, and then the other thing, sorry, forgive me, um, we're also be, probably next month, you can expect to see me again. To be talking about middle income housing, we did the middle, we did the middle income housing study last year, I mean, twenty twenty three, I believe, last year's twenty twenty three, that's weird to think. Um, so last year, in twenty twenty three, we did the middle income study, um, we are required to have our code updated. For state compliance with HB one, 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 zero. Uh, we will be bringing forward items for there, we are waiting for council direction for that one as well. On how we wanna proceed with middle income housing, so expect us to be talking to y'all about middle, uh, not middle, excuse me, middle housing. Um, middle income is another issue we probably need to talk about eventually. Um, and then the other thing that is going on is there's going to be likely some conversations about um short-term rentals. And necessary policies and that, so that might, that um, could involve um your input as well. Like I said, we got a ton of projects down the pipe, and uh, we're super excited to knock them out.
Any other questions, good or there or otherwise? Okay, so then with nothing else, so a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Alright, alright.
Mine.
Thank you.